Good evening. Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Curry County's Zoom Gold Beach City Council Candidate Forum. I am Georgia Nellen, tonight's moderator. I'd like to introduce our Voter Service co-chairs Charlie Alexander and Mary Jane LaBelle. Mary Jane will be co-hosting the Zoom along with League member Colleen Bun. Charlie will be our timer. This is number four of our four candidates forums. These forums are recorded and will be available on channel 182, CurryCountyVoices.com, LWVCurry.org, LWVOR.org, and Vote411.org via YouTube. The broadcast of tonight's Gold Beach City Council Candidates Forum is being furnished as a public service by the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Any reproduction, recording, transcript, I'm sorry, transcription or other use of this program without written consent is prohibited. Let me begin with the League of Women Voters' mission statement. The League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose candidates running for elected office. Any voting person can be a member of the League of Women Voters. We have both men and women members and invite you to join. Because of COVID-19, this is a virtual candidate forum, a first for the League of Women Voters of Curry County. Our thanks to Paul Addis of Coos Bay Library and a fellow community website partner of mine for his assistance with Zoom. Candidates tonight are Gold Beach Mayor Carl Popoff incumbent and Tammy Kaufman, Gold Beach City Council Position Number Two Chip Bradley and Beth Barker-Hodago. And for Gold Beach City Council Position Number Four Becky Campbell incumbent and Jeff Crook. All candidates running for these contested positions have been invited to this forum. Here are some ground rules for tonight's forum. Unless you are asked to speak, please keep yourself on mute. Candidates will be asked to speak in rotating order. Initial speakers have been determined by verbal number drawing. Each candidate will be given three minutes for their opening statement. Once that portion is completed, we will go to the question and answer section of the forum. Questions have been collected from the public and League members prior to the forum. You will have one and a half minutes to respond. Our timer Charlie will have Mary Jane put up the 30-second sign on the screen when you have 30 seconds left. When your time is up, a stop card will come on the screen. Candidates, can you see the cards? Okay, great, thank you. I will now introduce the candidates. Going first, candidate for Gold Beach Mayor Carl Popoff, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Georgia. I want to also thank the League for doing this. You know, I've been the mayor for the past 16, well, not the past 16 years, but for 16 years now. Prior to that, I was a city councillor and also was on the City Planning Commission. So in short, I've got about 20 years of service to this city. I've tried always to remember two things. Number one, the government is here to protect and serve citizens and their property. Number two, that I'm a servant to everybody. It doesn't make any difference what their party affiliation is or anything along those lines. If they're a citizen of this city, then I serve them. We have, you know, obviously, like a lot of cities, we have a few problems. Homelessness is one. We've got also the affordable housing is another. Affordable housing, we've been able to help others get started and try their best remedy that. Homelessness, that is even a stickier problem. And I am of the firm belief that it is best left up to the private sector. First of all, government should never be a landlord anyway, as far as I'm concerned. But really, I think that we have, more than anything, there's two other problems. One is real, the other one is quite potential. Number one is the COVID. The virus has hurt us all. I believe that it's important to get back to work because I think there are three elements to health. I think there is a physical, there is a mental, and there is a financial aspect of it. And all of three of these have got to work together. The other one is quite potential, but nevertheless, it is running rampant throughout many of our cities today, and that is the anarchists. And I just wanted to say and make everybody very, very aware of the fact that Gold Beach is now Portland, and I'm not Ted Wheeler. That, if elected, re-elected, then I will continue to do my very best for the citizens of this community to continue to protect them and their interests. So once again, I just want to thank you and the League for hosting this. And, well, we'll see where it goes from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Georgia.
Yeah, thank you. Tammy?
Got to unmute. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate the League for hosting this forum. I'm glad that you were able to innovate and figure out a way to deliver this product that you have done for years and years and years and still be able to reach the citizens by asking questions of the candidates. I've always found the forums to be informative. My name is Tammy Kaufman, as you probably know my now. I'm a sitting Gold Beach City Councillor, and I believe I'm the trusted leader in these uncertain times. Mayor Carl is a great man, and I have no bad things to say about him. And I know that we will work together whether I win or lose. And I do believe that tough times require tough leaders, and I think that I am one. I graduated from Gold Beach High School here in 1986. That makes me 52, if you want to do the math. I got my associate's degree many years later at Southwestern Oregon Community College. And then, just a couple, five years ago, I got my Bachelor's of Science at Eastern Oregon University, and I got that in philosophy, politics, and economics. It was a very interesting degree they offered online. I learned a lot. I've served the city in the beginning when I was just a young kid, young kid. And I started out on the Strategic Planning Committee, Gold Beach 2010. And then I was appointed to a Budget Committee position when Sam Wilson resigned from the city council because he moved out of town. And Mayor Schaefer gave me a shot as the youngest city councillor in Gold Beach. I believe I was 25 in 1993, and I served that appointment until 1998. And I did not run for election that year. I was then appointed to the Planning Commission, and I served on that capacity for 11 years. I was the chair oftentimes. And I was also on the Budget Committee. Whenever they had an opening, I was the one that would show up. I enjoy numbers. I also, that's what I've done for the city also, I also serve on the Urban Renewal Agency, which I am the chair. And we've done quite a bit with very little that we have to work with. And I'm blessed that a lot of people worked really hard on that program so that I could work with the council today to make it happen. It takes a lot of years of planning to make it work. But we started a housing program. We've helped with some beautification, and we don't even have a lot of money yet. We just barely trickles in at this part of the funding. I'm running down to 30 seconds. I'm a business owner. I currently own a property management company that specializes in cooperative housing. I work with places all over the state, and I'm getting really good at these remote calls. We have new challenges here in 2020. I think those are going to continue over the next couple of years. And I think we need a new leader, and I am the one to do that. I can adapt to change and reach out to citizens. I think we can do town halls with this type of method, and we can succeed together. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. All right, now for Gold Beach City Council Position Number Two. And Beth, it's, you're up.
Hi, thanks, League of Women Voters, for putting this on. Again, I did what Tammy said, being creative and using technology during these difficult times. I appreciate the effort. And Mary Jane, you had something in the chat about a little more light. Is that better? I turned on another light, so hopefully people can see me better. I am Beth Barker-Hodago. I am running for seat two, Gold Beach City Council. And why am I doing that? I am probably considered fairly new to the community. I'm coming up to nine years in January 2021. But from day one of relocating here, I knew this was where I intended to be for, you know, to live out our careers and our retirement here, my husband and myself. And so I dove in. I get involved in community. I feel if you're going to live in a community, if you can, then contributing to that community is kind of a civic duty. I was raised, you guys, I'm originally from New England, raised by staunch New Englanders who were very pounded into me that it's your civic duty, vote, 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 get involved. And raised by a woman who had extreme challenges and never once let any of those challenges deter her from her goals. And it's in my DNA to pursue goals in my life. And one of my goals is to be more engaged at civic level and to help shape our council in a way that I think I bring a unique lens to the council because of my involvement in both the coordinated care organizations, community advisory councils for a number of years, with all care for four years plus, and now with advanced health for a year. I get, I'm involved in the processes of community health assessments, community health improvement plans, and I feel like I have the unique opportunity to build a bridge between those experiences and those, that input from our community to, at the council level so that when we're looking at strategic plans, short-term, mid-term, long-term planning, we can look at that community health improvement plan and see where can we integrate the outputs from the work groups that are engaged. And, you know, so, and I would like to address the homelessness, but I have 30 seconds, and there's never enough time to address the homelessness, so we'll get to that, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Chip Bradley, why don't you go ahead?
Thanks, Georgia, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. It's been a while since I put my hat in the ring for anything. Those who don't know me, born and raised in Gold Beach. I left long enough to get my degree in psychology from U of O. Decide that city life was not for me. I like to be able to see my neighbors smile, say hi, and not, and when they wave back, get all five fingers. I decided to run at some urging from some friends who thought I, that they liked what I had saying in other places, wanted to have my voice be heard. Mainly, the platform I'm running on is make sure that our, make sure to maintain our city services, make sure everybody wants clean water, want our toilets to flush, make sure our police department or fire department have everything they need to do their jobs so we can continue to be proud of them because we're really blessed in this little town to have really good volunteer fire department, to have really, really good police department. And every once in a while, we need to fix a pothole or two. One of the things, if possible, the way the world's changing with COVID, we see, I'm seeing there's a lot of opportunity that maybe we can get some economic growth in our town, help our economy as people find ways to work from home, bringing outside money in. And I think also, the other thing is, if you start to look at some of my history, I'm versatile enough, I've done a lot of things throughout my life. I started, I've bucked hay as a kid, I've worked in restaurants. After getting my degree, I worked in developmental disability group homes, started as an entry-level support tech, worked my way up before I moved to the county, got to where I was writing service plans for the residents there, moved to county mental health, and left after we had a budget crisis that really showed me that the mental health program needed to be reformed, having three clients who committed suicide over a period of six months. Decided, at that time, my, by now, former wife and I decided that it was best for me to stay home with our son because he was just born, we wanted someone with him. And then I became, went in the business for myself when it was time to return the workforce. So I think all these experiences gives me a good insight in pretty much what everybody goes through deciding to live in Gold Beach. Winners are tight. Jobs sometimes hard to find, but also how to just keep your nose to the grindstone, stay grinding. And that's what I want to bring to the city council. I want to, whatever the next four years is going to throw us, throw at us, because none of us expected something like COVID, but I think I'm versatile enough that no matter what life decides to throw at us, I can handle.
Thank you. Okay, now, for Gold Beach City Council Position Number Four, Becky, you get to go first.
Hi, thanks, Georgia. Hello, my name is Becky Campbell, and I've been a city councillor here in Gold Beach for the last six years. I was elected to a four-year term and then appointed by Mayor Popoff for a two-year term. I moved to Gold Beach after a career in law enforcement. I worked for the Oakland Police Department in Oakland, California for 20 years. I started as a civilian employee and retired as a sergeant of police. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. My side hustle has always been teaching. I enjoy that. I taught classes at our in-house police academy. I taught classes in the police dispatchers academy, and then was hired by the NAPA Criminal Justice Training Center to teach in their dispatch academy. And this was in addition to my full-time duties as a law enforcement officer. I retired and moved to Gold Beach and wanted to continue to contribute to the town that I live in. I've always done that. You know, I lived in Oakland and worked in Oakland as a law enforcement officer. So I feel it's important to contribute to the community you live in. And that's when I was elected to city council. Again, I believe I said I've been a city councillor for six years. Some of the highlights I'd like to touch on that I've accomplished in the last six years was moving by the tugboat. Now, there was a tugboat over at the port. I was able to move that to our visitor center, what we call South Park, so that tourists and people passing through could get up and crawl around on the tugboat and play. I was appointed by Mayor Popoff as a liaison between the event center on the beach and city hall. That's been very rewarding. I monitor the spending of taxpayer money earmarked for infrastructure improvements at the event center. Many of you may have noticed they're getting their new roof now. We spent a lot of time working to get that done. I was also appointed by the mayor to the local Public Safety Coordinating Council, which I enjoy doing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff?
Hello, everybody. My name's Jeff Crook, obviously, and I, I'm kind of the new kid in a block. Although it's been four years, a little over four years, as a city councillor initially appointed and then elected into the office. I've got, I've got big, big plans, actually, for Gold Beach, should the, should the council agree with me. I'd like mostly to, to, I guess, I'll start with my background a little bit. I ended up graduating in the Dallas, Oregon, high school and went to the army and spent four years there. I was overseas in a Patriot Air Defense Artillery Battalion. I got to see firsthand the way we were treated overseas and the way that we were looked at. Then came back and went to school and went to several community colleges before I finally graduated. I got my, got my degree from the Art Institute of Houston, won a couple of major contests there. I'm actually was, was training as a designer, visual communications. And then got into advertising afterward there in Houston and worked there for a few years, probably about four years there. Won some awards, did well there, and got tired of the corporate life, just got tired of it. Today, I'm coming, I'm going to go visit my parents up there in Gold Beach, where here is where I was born. So I've been around. And so, really, I've got to see a few things. I've got different backgrounds from painting to managing nine dozen acres of timberland for my family. I spent 10 years doing that and started interacting with some of the governmental agencies and liked how that kind of felt. And that led to my applying for the council upon being asked by a neighbor. My future, my, I guess what I'm looking to do is I'd like to really address the workforce housing issue we have here. I think we need to bring more, more affordable housing in. I think there's a way to do it and a way to not do it. So I'd like to, I spent through the past three years building a pretty good-sized project here in, just north of Riley Creek School. And I think we've, we've put together a pretty good deal. So with that, that's my stopping time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going into the question and answer portion of the forum. Questions collected from the public and League members have been screened by the, by the Voter Service co-chairs for duplications. Each candidate running for the same office will be given an opportunity to answer that question. We'll now present the questions that have been submitted for answers. Again, candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond. So I have questions for the city council, but I will also include the mayoral candidates in that because I think that's just as important to hear their answers to the same questions. However, there are a few questions specifically for the mayoral candidates. So I will start off with a question for everyone, and I will start off by asking Carl Popoff, Tammy, and then we're going to go to position number two and ask Chip and Beth, and then we'll have Becky, say Chip and Beth, and then Becky and Jeff. All right, so keep your places in mind here. The question is, what, if anything, should the city do to provide shelter, food, healthcare, or other services for the unhoused?
I think I addressed that a little bit at the beginning. I do not believe that it is the city's responsibility to get very involved in that. I think it is the city's responsibility and can be the city's responsibility to encourage and to help where needed, private individuals and organizations to handle that. So, once again, I'm very leery of government getting into these type of activities because, quite frankly, I've never seen government truly ever do them well. So that's my answer.
Tammy?
Thank you. I do have an answer for this question. I do like the model in Eugene where they have, they're basically camps, and the city did help them. I believe they leased on the land for a reasonable amount to a nonprofit to run them. Something like that might work here if we can develop a relationship with a strong nonprofit that can make it happen. And I have reached out to several organizations, and I've had several appointments canceled on me, so I have not been able to actually have a conversation with an organization to actually pick that up. As far as the city being responsible for this particular problem, it really isn't in the city charter. It's not our responsibility, but we do end up having problems relating to it, and it tends to become an issue for our police department, becomes an issue for our citizens, and it's an issue for the people that are clearly unhoused. So I have a compassion for people that are in that position, but I don't believe it gets the city's job to actually solve it, but we could partner and help make that happen because we do have more strength than an independent nonprofit would on their own. And if I have time, I'm going to try to explain the reason we have to have a nonprofit do that type of thing is if a government agency does it and a person breaks the rules, you have to have a hearing because they have a constitutional right to property. If it is like Oasis Shelter where it's a guest staying there, they can say, sorry, you broke the rule, we gave you a warning, you're out. And they're literally on the street. And that's the difference. If the city ran a program like that and somebody was a problem, we could not get them out for weeks and possibly months. So it has to be a nonprofit that runs it. That's just the way the Constitution was written and the way we've worked around it, where we can work with people that have issues, and when they become a problem and they're a safety threat to others, that they can be removed. So I'm not heartless, but it has to be done by a nonprofit. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Chip?
Oh, I think both Tammy and Carl bring up a very good point. I don't think it's in the city's purview to be responsible for taking care of the homeless. One, we don't have the tax base, even if we did, but we do, as a city, need to be, to continue to have compassion. We need to be a good partner, be able to address issues that these private and the nonprofits run into, such as land use, and be ready to assist when we can. Tammy's got a, is absolutely right on the fact that if it's a government agency running it, there does have to be a hearing. If you have someone causing a lot of trouble for the people that are surrounding, it'll be very difficult, if not near impossible, to get rid of them, that's taken care of by being in a nonprofit or a private organization. But as far as the city goes, the city, I don't think can be responsible, but we do need to make sure that our council or mayor are good partners to those who are trying to help these people who desperately need help.
Thank you. Beth?
Sorry about the phone going off over here. So, of course, if people know me, they know this is a subject that's near and dear to my heart, and I work every day, and it went to folks that are unsheltered in Gold Beach. And I know that Mayor Popoff has also spent many, many hours, countless hours, ministering to and supporting our homeless population in Gold Beach. I'm grateful to hear Tammy discuss the potential for the city to enter into some sort of public-private partnership with a nonprofit to discover what could, what could be done, what the possibilities are. It's always nice to hear that there is a willingness to create space for dialogue rather than just not engaging in the conversation. So I'm enthusiastic about Tammy's response. And we, as the Curry Homeless Coalition Executive Director, I'm very interested in becoming a partner with the city of Gold Beach and with our community action agency, which we already are partnering with them. And in fact, we're in conversations now about how we can become a subrecipient of Oregon Housing Community Services funding to address supportive housing programs here in Curry County as a whole, whether that lands in Gold Beach or Whether that lands in Gold Beach or that goes down into Brookings. It really all depends on, you know, the will of the people. Yeah, but I do believe that there is a there is a there is a role for all of our community, our city, our law enforcement, our county, everyone. When it comes to addressing homelessness, because these are community members that live live in our town. So coming together would be advantageous.
Thank you. Okay. Becky.
Okay, um, I do agree with a lot of what's been said. Actually, I agree with almost all of what has been said. I do think that the best revenue that we could take would be to form a 3P, which was mentioned by Beth, a public-private partnership where we work in conjunction with a nonprofit for reasons mentioned by Counselor Kaufman. We need that nonprofit so that we can do evictions more quickly. And also history has shown that nonprofits are able to self-regulate better in that type of sheltered environment. In other words, the actual participants of the shelter would set rules and regulations. And surprisingly, those are often more stringent than what the government entity or the nonprofit entity was contemplating putting into place. So they're fully capable of of setting rules and parameters. But the public-private partnership, I believe, is a way to hit that. And doing that with a nonprofit is the way to go. And I believe my minute and a half should be about up now. I can't see the stop sign, so I'm guessing my time's up very well now. Thanks.
You're close. Thank you. All right, Jeff.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. And the thing is, it's hard to it's hard to look at it and go, well, maybe you don't want to be, you know, you don't want to lack compassion when you're coming up with these solutions. But everyone is really, my prior experience on city council tells me the same thing that y'all have said. Truly, there's there needs to be thought put into it. But there's very little the city can do by itself. Or that it should do right now, if you look at the way that things are written. But that doesn't mean we can't think and 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 use our heads to to come up with a better better solution. Because I do see them around. I've had I've had homeless at my doorstep. Gave the guy a shower, you know, but but then there's, you know, finding a place to be. And I would go to my to our to our church and say, hey, can you can you put some people up? And usually that that's where they go. So I've been asked more than a few times, where where do I go? I'm homeless. And I guess it breaks your heart, frankly. So I would say we need to all get together and come up with some solutions that are going to be beneficial for the homeless as well as the city. And that's my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, the next question is going to be for the mayoral candidates. And I'll start with you first, Tammy, then I'll ask Carl. And the question is, what do you think is the most significant mayoral duty? And why do you think you would be good at that job? Tammy?
I think the most significant mayoral duty, because it is a weak mayor system, is twofold. One is helping draft and craft the agenda and two to carry out good meetings. One of the things I've noticed about these types of meetings where we're meeting online. And and most people know that there's two kinds of people, those introverts and extroverts. Introverts say very little at the council dais. But on these meetings, they will talk and you can pull out stuff out of counselors that won't say a word otherwise. And so it's been very helpful for me as an extrovert that has no problem speaking first to help people bring that out. And so you get to hear from everybody. And one of my favorite tools when I run a meeting is called the round robin, where you literally ask everybody their input before you move on. So that way you know what's going on. So I think that's the biggest role of the mayor is is working with the council, helping the council priorities move forward. And one of the things that happens in our current system is staff controls the agenda. And so the council might have five things they're working on, but it doesn't show up on the next agenda because nobody moved it forward. And my goal is, okay, council, you got five things. What's the most important? Let's make sure it makes the next agenda. And make sure we get our stuff done that the council wants, not just what staff wants. I love the staff. They're wonderful people, but they forget that we too have things that we want to get done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Carl, you're up and you need you should put your video back on.
You know, I would, Georgia, but unfortunately I'm hitting here on a low battery now. So I'm just kind of eking along and I'm hoping you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, just a second. I'm getting help. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right.
We can even see you now, too.
What Tammy was saying as far as the meetings is concerned, that is true. And I have been told, well, quite frankly, in the 16 years that I've had to chair meetings, I've never missed a one. But the other, and it is important, I I believe, to hold a very, very good meeting and in short, one where the honestly, I do things like asking counselors what their opinions are if they haven't offered them because it's important to me. And I also rely very much on the counselors. Each one of them brings something to the table that I in of myself wouldn't know or am not that adept in. And so it is something to me that is that is very important to have those good meetings. But the other thing, and this is the one that I've concentrated on more than anything else. And the reason I've been able to concentrate on it so much is because we've had a good council. We've had good staff and I haven't had to worry about them, much like the the first eight years. And that was to get out into the state and be a member of an awful lot of different committees and boards to make sure, to ensure that the state of Oregon and all of those organizations, ODOT, which I served on for three years, whatever. They don't forget Gold Beach, Oregon. We're out here in the boonies and it's real easy to forget us. And I have done my level best to ensure that nobody forgets us.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this next question is for everyone. And we're gonna start and go backwards from our order. So Jeff, you'll get to speak first and then we'll have Becky. And then we'll have Beth, and then we'll have Chip, and then we'll go to Tammy and then Carl. So this is the question here. How is the city planning for post-disaster resiliency? We're talking about fire, earthquake, major storms. So Jeff.
Wow, it's hard for me to answer since I haven't been on council lately. But I can say that I do know that we have here on our property, a a actual container that we keep for the for the kids down here at the school. Should there be tsunami or earthquake or something like that, we have a place for them to go to. They can walk up the hill and they have they'll have supplies there for them. It's a big deal, this this thing, because we have to, we know that we could undergo a serious earthquake, tsunami event at any time. We are overdue. So it's important that we be ready for it and you know, I think that that's, if we don't do something that way, then we are certainly to blame. So we have to have all of our ducks in a row. And I know that we have very various businesses have have passed out of the their their areas if they're if they're in the tsunami zone. If you have a major fire, well, that becomes difficult because we're up on a bit of an island here. But we only have so many in in and out type highways. So there's only so much you can do there. Anyways, thank you. That's my time.
Okay, thank you. Becky.
So what is the city doing regarding resiliency? Specifically specifically related to the fires and the storms, so more disaster preparedness. The one thing that I can say on that is, well, a couple. I have great faith in Will Nudal. He's our Public Works Superintendent. And he has an awesome crew that works for him and they show up in the middle of the night and fix repairs. They're a wonderful group. But as far as the the real emergency management system, the event center on the beach recently signed a contract with Mr. Dumeier, Emergency Manager of the County, and he is going to put his office at the event center on the beach. So that has a lot of wonderful assets for Gold Beach in that we will have an emergency center right here in town that we can go to, we can stage at. He's also going to be able to help coordinate large activities that we might have at the event center, like our county fair. We had problems before communicating between superintendents. And he said that he would use his resources within the Emergency Management Office. He's gonna actually put that above the 4H offices. So we'll have that right in town. We'll be able to coordinate well. And I'm sure my time is up by now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Actually, you know what? I'm gonna ask this question again because there's a slight slant to it. And I just and so I'm gonna just say, the the question is, how is the city playing for post-disaster resiliency? And that refers to the fire, earthquake, and major storms. So it's a slightly different slant to it. So let's go forward. And I think I Jeff, I mean, sorry, Beth.
Yeah, so Jeff, it's interesting. You mentioned the container above the Riley Creek School. I was the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator when that project was underway and I helped connect Tom Denny to the vendor that they bought the container from. So and and many, many, maybe you, most of you know that I did hold that position for three years. And I do have 15 years of emergency management at varying levels as an agency liaison to to the Sacramento County Emergency Operations Center. I've been a CERT member since 2006. I became a CERT trainer here in Curry County. While I was the FEP coordinator, I established a 60-plus person medical reserve corps. While I was the FEP coordinator with Curry Community Health to with 82% of the membership being professional, medical professionals. So it's near and dear to my heart to to be a resilient community to to, I think, you know, the way the question is asked is what, how is the city planning as not not being a council member? It's interesting to hear that Mr. Dumeier is going to move his offices and stage at the event center. I think that's an excellent move, an excellent step. And I would love to be involved in in that discussion if I'm elected and like to be a part of that process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chip.
Think some of the first things we need to do as a city is to make sure that one, our citizens are taking some personal responsibility. One of the, yeah, born and raised here when I was in college, I almost got stuck in town because we had Huga Stagan and Arizona Beach slide at the same time. So we've always, my family's always made sure that we've kept a couple of weeks worth of canned food and stuff stuff on ourselves. So if we ever have a supply chain interruption, we know our family's taken care of. And I think one of the things we can do as a city is make is encourage people to be doing that. Not, you know, Jada, sorry, she's little, she doesn't understand. And then I think we probably do, if we don't already have one, we probably need to have one. Because one of the things in a major disaster, if we did have a major disaster, we are gonna have to have, I would probably be thinking we'd be relying on our chief of police to help keep people calm because grew up here. We, if you decided to live in Gold Beach, you are resilient because we don't have a, we have tough winters. It's not always, not always fun. And and even if you, like Beth has only been here nine years, but the fact that her and her husband decided to stay here, they're resilient. I would think everybody that's in this meeting is resilient. Everybody who's watching this is resilient. So in post-post disaster, it would be up to the city council be up and make sure that we're helping remind people that in the panic that we would probably see coming afterwards and not seeing cards come up. So I'm guessing I'm close, but that's my quick answer.
All right. Thank you, Chip. All right, Tammy.
Thank you for the question. So how is the city planning for post-disaster resiliency? So when I look at what the city is responsible for, the most important things are water, sewer, police, fire, roads. And not very many roads actually belong to the city. The 101 belongs to the camp, to the state. And then you've got the county roads that come in and out. So we have to think about what we're going to be doing there. And I'm really glad to say that we have a dynamic staff when it comes to providing those kinds of things in crazy times. I remember when the Checko Bar Fire was happening, we were getting some flack that we're not doing enough advertising for tourism. And what people didn't know is that city staff was coordinating with Crescent City, Smith River, and Brookings to actually evacuate the city of Brookings. They were like, we'll take half, you take half. Where are we gonna put them? How are we gonna do that? We don't want to tell anybody anything like that. They didn't even tell us on the council. But staff was on it and they are like really good. When we had the Lighthouse Fire a couple of years ago on the beach, that scared, that was really scary. And it's just thankful that we had the Checko Bar Fire resources to put that out with us. Because I don't know if we'd if it would have crossed the road and then we would have been in trouble. And I look at what happened over in Phoenix and talent. And I have a dear friend, Leon Sharp, that was in that fire. And thankfully, she's alive, but she lost everything she owns. So and those talents have to rebuild. And so we just started talking about proactively talking to people like Crook Timberland about maybe helping us reduce fuels. And they already have a plan with Coos Forest and our fire chief to start working on the beach and reducing fuels there. And I'm out of time. So thank you.
Thank you. Carl.
Well, you're talking post-disaster now.
Yes.
We have an emergency plan, the city does. But when you're talking post-disaster, what you're talking about is people pretty much all for themselves. I've talked to geologists. I know what will happen if we have that big quake. There is not going to be an operating police force. There will not be an operating public service, public works. We don't know what sort of shape that the hospital will be in, which is, as far as I'm concerned, is our greatest attribute for the city. There is so many unknowns. What I have told people time and time and time again is be prepared for whatever comes. In short, make sure that you have a weapon. Make sure that you have food because you're going to be basically on your own. And according to the geologists and others that I've spoken to, we could be isolated for a long, long time before any real help could get to us. So as Chip was saying, yeah, we're resilient. You almost have to be to live here. And resiliency, that type of person will, Lord willing, will come through that. But once again, this is not something that we can honestly plan for. Anything of that magnitude or a great fire that would come rushing through here. We would all be busy just trying to save ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have a question for the mayoral candidates and this time, Carl, I'll have you go first and then Tammy. And the question is, how do you make the city a welcoming place for all?
Well, you know, actually, to my way of thinking, it when you have a police force. when you have a police force that never forgets that they are servants of the public, when you have a city council and other employees within the city, staff and what have you, when they remember that they are servants, you can't help but then to impress people and to make them feel welcome. The other benefit we have is the majority of the people that we have here are just good people. They, they're friendly. They like other people, and they're a welcoming type. So between what we already have and established as far as the city, the city council, and the population that we have here, I honestly think we're doing a pretty good job right now by making sure that people know that they're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Tammy.
I'm trying to decipher exactly what they mean by welcoming because that could be, that could have several connotations. And there is the, hey, we're happy to see you here. And I remember, what was the 1980s? We had the commercials about wave, waves to tourists. I think we need to make people from California feel more welcome because they feel like we're, we pick on them, but they do come here making some demands. You're not going to get that part the day they said they were going to give it to you. We like to hurry up and wait in Curry County. We don't like it. We just live with it. But I'm going to take the broader explanation of a welcoming place. And people of color, people maybe that weren't born here, people that might be of a different religious belief than Christian, which is our predominant, maybe somebody that isn't conservative because we're a fairly conservative county. How do we help them feel welcome? And I think we do that by treating people fairly and talking about the difficult conversations to have, talk about people that are minorities, that are in leadership positions, and standing up for things that are right, even when it's difficult, making people feel welcome. And our city personnel policy, we recently reviewed, and it is actually pretty fair and welcoming. In there, too, we work on discrimination. So I think that's what the intent of the question was, and so that's how I'm going to answer it.
Right, thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to have a question that I'm going to have Beth answer first, and then Chip, and then we're going to go with Tammy and Carl, and then Jeff and Becky. Okay, so we're going to jump around a little bit, and you're going to like this one, Beth. The question is, what is happening with affordable housing in Gold Beach?
Oh, boy. Well, there's, it depends on how you define affordable, and there's a very, there are varying definitions of what is affordable. So I'm going to speak to, you know, the low-income affordable, maybe the subsidized and possibly supportive housing. And what we know is that our clients are waiting anywhere from 18 to 24 months to get a Section 8 housing choice voucher. There are wait lists in, you know, subsidized properties here. Grand Management manages quite a few. And we're giving applications out left and right, but people are waiting anywhere from, you know, like I said, 18 to, they could wait a couple of years right now to get a unit, especially if they're a family that's requiring, you know, a two- or three-bedroom unit. Once people get into those units, they tend to stay in them if they can because they're difficult to obtain. So we don't have adequate number of affordable housing. And by affordable, I'd like to talk about the fact that we are a tourist community, and we rely on our housekeepers and our laundry workers and our people who pump gas and bag our groceries and, you know, in some cases, teach our kids. And they need to be able to afford and to live in our community. And so we need to lean forward, and I know the city has been creative with their urban renewal funding, with the White Project, we're at the port. I'd like to broaden that, expand, you know, let's look a little further out and see what we can do to entice development of affordable housing in Gold Beach.
Okay, thank you. Chip.
Oh, we definitely need to develop some, and COVID-19 is not helping. As friends, my friends in real estate agent, I just finished working on a house that went on the market a couple months ago, and as soon as it went on the market, it went for more than the person listed. So that's definitely not going towards affordable. Work, working on places that, you know, you yourself can't afford. And I have to agree with Beth that we definitely need to be looking for ways to, so that the people who are working on our grocery stores, that is pumping our, pumping our gas, the people taking care of the tourists can afford to live here. Because I've got lots of friends who, it is tight, the housekeeper, and she makes good money. And it's always tight, so it's definitely an issue in the long run. We need to be looking on how to make it so people can afford to live here. As if the job market doesn't match the housing market, we're asking for another bubble like we had 2008.
Thank you. All right. I think, let's see, I believe we have, gosh, I lost the order.
I think it's me. That's what I wrote down.
Thank you.
All right. So what have we done so far? We have tiny homes and accessory dwelling units. We were the first in the county to change our ordinances to allow people to put a second unit on their lots if it could fit, and we are pretty generous. It can be up to 600 square feet. It can be an RV park model, which already is built to a code. And I believe we've had anywhere from four to six of those built. I have to double-check that number. And it is helping because these smaller homes do rent for a little less. And we also excluded that they cannot be vacation rentals. The second thing was using, borrowing money from the city to loan to the Urban Renewal Agency. We loaned money to a local developer to build seven units that should rent in the $800 range. That's the target at this point, and they should be done by the end of next year, I believe. So that's some of our accomplishments. Some of the things fighting us is state law. As Oregon has become a tenant state and not a fair state in landlord-tenant law, it's very difficult to talk people into renting their houses. Grand Management is our biggest partner. They have three apartment complexes in Gold Beach that are all funded through low-income funding. And we do have the Section 8 program, but that's a very difficult program to get people in now because they can rent them for more money than what Section 8 can have. I would like to encourage more group homes, and I would like to help, if I can find the right partner, create a law where people could sublease in their homes and not have to go under ORS 90s complications.
Great, thank you. Carl.
Well, you know, I agree wholeheartedly with what Tammy has said. And it's something that I was going to bring up as well, of the things that we have done. There is one other thing, too. Private individuals building right now and making accommodations available. We've got Dr. John and Hazel Rush are now in the process of outfitting, or actually, creating apartments in the Rush Building. And I believe that there are going to be about three or four of those. And I've been in to take a look at them, at one of them that is almost done now. And it's really quite nice. They're looking at more of the, oh, you know, the traveling doctors, nurses, and that type of thing. But nevertheless, that is a nice indication that things are being done. The private sector is seeing that there is a need, and when possible, they are doing it. So, you know, I'm actually kind of encouraged by that, you know, by everything. Yes, we still have a long ways to go, but on the other hand, what's nice about it is that we're moving that way. And so I'm happy with that.
Thank you. All right, Jeff.
Um, yeah, this is a huge issue, I think, for the city. We have a problem with, it's just hard to get workers. I mean, nobody can find good workers around here. There's nowhere for them to live. We are, currently, presently, we are working on trying to come up with some workforce housing. Curry Properties is, we had a large development that's very expensive to start off with. But my advice early was to do workforce housing, and I think that was, and I'm talking high-quality, low, and I mean, small footprint, so you don't have it going crazy for price. Get something out there. We've got places to put them, but we need to get going on that right away. And that is currently something we're planning, and also opening up some of these areas that are, looking at areas where we can, where we can change the urban growth boundary to accommodate these areas where we could possibly get some more housing and to take away from those other areas where we'll never be developed. Can't help with that. I also believe that, you know, some more apartment-type complexes or apartment-model-type things could be done quickly. And there are areas around the city that actually would be good candidates for that. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. Becky.
Okay, um, what our Urban Renewal Agency did, and that agency is chaired by Councilor Kaufman, what we did is we provided a local contractor with a low-interest loan. That was a loan that she was referring to, that the city of Gold Beach loaned money to the Urban Renewal Agency, the Renewal Urban Agency, then loaned that money to what candidate Barker Hidalgo mentioned, the White Property, or White Project, which is down by our port. Seven units renting in the $800 range. Then, as Councilor Kaufman mentioned, the accessory dwelling units, that's been a boom. We were the first city to do that. We were ahead of the curve. This is a the Housing Action Plan. We're doing really well in regards to what our steps are to fulfilling that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have the, probably the last question of the forum. And so I'm actually going to go back from where we just started. So I'm going to have you, Becky, answer it first, and then it'll be Jeff, and then it'll be Carl, and then Tammy, and then Chip, and then Beth. So the question is, what will be your three top issues to address for Gold Beach if elected or reelected?
Three top projects?
Issues, yeah. Projects, issues, yeah.
Okay. Issues and projects are different. Could you repeat the question one more time?
Okay, it's actually issues. What will be your three top issues to address for Gold Beach if elected or reelected?
Okay. The three top issues that I will address. The first is, I think that legislating during a pandemic has and will continue to be a difficult hurdle that we're going to have to overcome. It makes the give-and-take interactions that you normally have with people in the audience, with being in the same room where you can actually see and read body language of your fellow counselors. It just makes what we do more difficult. So that is one of the challenges that we have. I think the way to alleviate that specific problem would be to have strong connections with our constituents. And as an existing counselor with, with seven years of experience, I have built and established and forged relationships that I think are invaluable during this critical time. One of the other things I would like to accomplish, oh, that was quick, is to continue the relationship that I forged with the event center on the beach. I'm a liaison in their expenditure of taxpayer money. We have collected, we should have about $300,000 by the end of the year that we have collected towards infrastructure improvements at the event center. And I'm really proud of the strides that they've made. Thank you. Thank you. Jeff.
Yeah. Well, number one, I think would be work on finding places to put workforce housing. That's number one for me. And also streamline a packet for developers so that when they come in, they can more affordably build homes, get homes in here, work on ways to reduce or defer SDC fees for developers. I think that's a big deal. We're talking $11,000 or more. I don't think, Tammy, you could correct me on that if I'm wrong, but I know it's a lot of money, and if you're, whatever, you just want to bring in a little park model. I mean, that's a lot of money. Your place could only cost $23,000 if you have an SDC charter, I don't know, whatever it is. So I'd be wanting to work on that. I also want to work on continually finding something to bring people to Gold Beach in the winter. I think that it is dark and dreary here, and I'd propose something like a festival of lights or something to get, to get the area lit up and get more people to come in and draw attention to the area in a time when we could really use them and fill up our hotels and motels. And the third thing would be to, again, find a better way to work with COVID-19 issues and try to get, make sure that we're doing the right things so that we don't incur issues down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl.
Well, to begin with, like Becky, I think the Counsel Campbell, that the COVID thing has made things rather difficult. It's been made difficult for our merchants and what have you. I actually, a few months ago, took a walk down the street and just thanked the merchants for staying open, those that could, and for doing what they did and making, helping them to understand that the city does indeed truly appreciate all their efforts through these trying times. So that is a problem right there. The second one has always been, for me, work, jobs, in other words. That's why I was so pleased when we got the hospital, the new hospital, in which, by the way, not to pat myself on the back, but I did go to Salem to fight for that doggone thing. And you wouldn't believe what they didn't know. But at any rate, that supplies good-paying jobs. And without decent-paying jobs, the housing in and of itself is sort of a moot point. If you can't afford it because you don't have a job that you're good at doing and be able to make the money to do it, then it doesn't really make much difference. So jobs have always come very high for me. Third, once again, given the political climate that we see that's going throughout the nation and within our own state, I'm awfully concerned about that. I don't think it's going to get any better anytime sooner. And I do want to be prepared for it if it happens to come our way.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, Tammy.
Thank you. I want to remind people that I'm running for mayor, and the mayor's primary job is to help the council with their priorities. So the first thing I would like to do is work with the council to have community engagement remotely like this so that we know what's going on more readily and more on a regular basis. I would like to do a regular check-in with the mayor, a little different than what Mayor Jake Piper, Peeper is doing in Brookings. I don't know how many of you know, but he does like a Facebook three or four times a week. I think it's at 6 o'clock most, most of the time, something like that, but a little bit more interactive like this. I'd like to sit down with the council and get a list of their priorities and go over those priorities in their order, and then we'll work on getting them done instead of waiting to see if they show up on the agenda. I do have videos on YouTube if you would like to learn a little bit more about me. And I also wanted to mention that the hospital was built to a 9.0 earthquake. And so it is specially designed to be resilient, and when it was built, it was the best on the coast. And I don't believe anybody has built one better yet. So I think, thank everybody for watching this tonight, and thank you for being here. I thank each and every one of you for putting your hat in the ring and for willing to, to run for office. And thank you all for being cordial and polite and for showing the federal candidates how And thank you all for being cordial and polite and for showing the federal candidates how it should be done.
Okay. Chip?
Thank you, Georgia. First and foremost, I would wanna work hard to make sure to maintain our existing city infrastructure, cuz without, without that, we don't have a city. The other one that's kinda near and dear to my heart is, is looking for areas of economic growth in our town with COVID-19. One of the things that is obvious is that the, a lot of the working world is changing. There are people in town who are starting to get jobs where they're able to work from home. There's people that, because of some of the civil unrest, because of the uncertainty, are moving here and bringing that outside money in. That's all gonna help our economy. And I think the next step to be looking for is for those, those companies that want to move to a small place. Because I think another one or one, just one more company the size of Freeman Marine that would be, wanna relocate here, put people to work here, would do wonders for us. I remember when I was a kid, when the mill had 300 people, economics weren't that big of a deal. And the third one that really needs to be tackled, that I'd love to tackle, is finding ways to encourage the private sector to be built, putting more investment into low, low-income affordable housing. I've seen a lot of ideas, some of them that just got bounced off me a couple of days ago that I haven't had time to digest and, and talk intelligently about them. But there are, whether elected or not, I'll share those with, share those with the council when I feel like I'm confident enough to understand them. Anyway, and thank you, Georgia. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Good luck, Beth. Everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Beth.
Am I up, or is it Jeff? Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Am I next?
Yes, you are. I'm sorry.
I was, I thought, okay. So, housing, housing, and housing. No, I'm just kidding. But housing is the number-one issue, and I, and I do understand the dynamics and that it is not necessarily the city's sole responsibility, but it is important to me. It is an issue that is important to me and that I would like to pursue as far as the public-private partnership angle. So, and I'm here to learn. I've not served on a city council before, so this is gonna be a growth and learning experience for me. I'm excited, and I'm, I love to learn. So I look forward to becoming acclimated and learning what my role really is. It's one thing to sit here and answer questions as a candidate, but it's another to fill the seat and to do a good job. So my second priority is to learn as much as possible about how to be the best counselor that I can. And consensus building is something that I have had some success in in my lifetime, my career. I've, I've had a lot of time working in nonprofits with skinny, you know, thin margins, and, and so being creative and thinking outside the box is something that I'm accustomed to. And I also would like to thank the League and everyone on this meeting and Candidate Forum, and those who tune in and listen, and my opponent Chip. And yes, I agree with Tammy. We, we are a model of how this should work for, you know, a political exchange or non-political exchange, nonpartisan exchange, let's put it that way. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. And thank you, candidates. We went over a little bit over an hour here, so I appreciate your indulgence here. But this completes tonight's Zoom Candidate Forum. As mentioned earlier, the Candidate Forum recordings will be available on Channel 182, currycountyvoices.com, l w v curry.org, l w v o r dot org, and vote411.org via YouTube. Thanks to these organizations for making them available. And the League thanks you, the candidates, for participating, and to the viewers for watching and learning about your candidates. Good evening and good night.